Okay, good evening and welcome to the October fourteenth twenty twenty four city council meeting. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel post the meeting. Welcome to all and thank you for joining tonight. City clerk, please take a roll.
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christianson.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Council, please stand and join me in the saying of the pledge allegiance. Councilmember Cotton, would you please lead us in the same way?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now moved our first item of regular business to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
There is who did the first motion? Christian, who did the second time, alright? To approve the agendas as presented, or is there any discussion or motion for amendment? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. With that, let's move on. Our next agenda item is Sarah Miller oath of office for police officer Jack Yang. Chief Lynch, will you introduce the item?
Evening, council. Tonight I got the distinct pleasure of bringing before you the newest Snoqualmie police officer. Jack Yang comes from the Seattle Police Department. And so he's already completed the academy. And as soon as his uniforms come in, as you can see, he will start field training. Prior to him taking up law enforcement as his career, he spent time in the Air Force, was an airman that was stationed the majority of his time over at Fairchild. And he loves this area and we are thrilled to have him here. He's already, he's been here since the first of October. And I'm sure he's bored out of his mind with the different things we have him reading and the policies and the trainings and he just, he's biting at the bit right now to go out and and learn some police work with us and and hit the road. But tonight it's about him becoming the newest member of our family. And both cities will see him out on the streets here pretty soon. So we're looking forward to that. And right now, if we call up the city clerk and Jack, if you can move forward, we'll officially swear you into the position of police officer.
Aye, Jack Yang. Been duly appointed to the office of police officer of the city of
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my
Solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability. And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie. Laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States.
Um Holloway, if you'd like to come up and we can take some photographs and Wendy, you are more than welcome to come up and take photos as well.
You don't miss the rest of this meeting, it's gonna be great.
Listen to the youth then.
Congratulations, welcome.
Great to have you.
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda, we'd like to move to appointment of the Economic Development Commission Arts Commission. The the purpose of the agenda bill was to appoint Vasuda Sharma to the Economic Development Commission and Ashley Hale to the Arts Commission. May I have a motion to support the appointments?
So move.
Second.
Alright, it was moved in seconds, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, and Vashuda, I see you online. Did you want to make any comments to the council based on your appointment?
No, I.
Alright, nevermind.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you so much.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to.
Semi promoter. There we go.
Is she, Vasuda, did you wish to make comments to the council tonight? On your appointment?
Uh, no, I was just saying, uh, thank you very much. I wish I could be there in person, but I'm.
I'm not hearing anything, we'll move on with the agenda. Alright, uh, next item is proclamation twenty four twenty Hindu Heritage Month. I believe we have somebody online receiving? Nope, okay, I'll read it and we'll proceed on. Hindu Heritage Month is celebrated every October, which coincides with major Hindu holidays such as Navrati and whereas Hindu Americans represent a variety of ethnic backgrounds. And whereas there are an estimated one point two billion Hindus worldwide and approximately two point five million Hindus in in America. Whereas our community has benefited from the many innovations of Hindu Americans. Whereas we are proud to recognize the positive influence of Hindu Americans on the economic vitality, growth and wellbeing of Snoqualmie Valley, Valley, excuse me. Now I therefore, on behalf of Catherine Ross, mayor of the city of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Hindu Heritage Month and urge all residents to celebrate the contributions made by Hindu Americans. Thank you. Alright, are there any, we won't be taking online public comments as per our process. Are there any members of the public present wishing to make comment before the council? Alright, seeing none, I will forego public comment and forego the readings of procedures thereof.
And you had a good pace going here, Mariposa.
Good clip.
Don't ruin it now. Alright, public comment is now closed. With that, let's move on to the consent agenda, contains approval of the city council minutes stated September twenty three, September thirtieth and October third, twenty twenty four. The claims approval report dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Agenda Bill twenty four oh eight six Network Infrastructure Modernization. And Agenda Bill twenty four oh nine five Interlocal Agreement Renewal with Score Jail. And Agenda Bill twenty four oh nine seven Authorization of Continued Legal Services with Pacifica Law Group. And Agenda Bill twenty four dash one hundred Residential Sewer Connection. May I have a motion to approve a consent agenda?
Some of second.
Are there any members of the public wishing to make comment on the consent agenda prior to our vote? See, no one will move on. Is there any discussion in regards to the consent agenda tonight? Alright. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. That will move on to ordinance. The first ordinance this evening is Agenda Bill twenty four oh five five Snoqualmie Municipal Code Amendments to Title fourteen and fifty implementing Senate Bill five two ninety. This is the first reading of the ordinance. Councilman Washington, would you please read the summary?
Okay, so move to adopt ordinance number one, two, nine, three, amending the Snoqualmie Municipal Code to comply with the requirements of SB five two nine zero. Down.
No, this is first reading tonight, so it's just introduction.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's just the introductory session.
Just first reading, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I can't, it hasn't downloaded yet.
Alright. Uh, any discussion or are there any members of the public wishing to make comment before we entertain discussion on this tonight? Seeing the members of the of the public raise their hand. Any discussion amongst council? Councilor Wilson?
So I got a a resident who's complaining to me that the county is taking forever on a permit. Are they subject to something like this as well? Where they would, they would be forced to refund some of those permitting fees uh, for being way outside the ninety days that they're supposed to respond. Yeah, how does he, so, so what? He makes a request for that and then they just don't respond to that either? Is that, is that how it's gonna?
Should we have the?
I'm looking at you because you're nodding.
David, you can jump in if you want. It's state law, so it applies to both cities and counties, so. I don't know where the county is in aligning their process with the new state law, but Emily does.
Technically, it's not in effect until January twenty twenty five, so Snoqualmie's moving and grooving.
So this guy still has no recourse against the county for taking forever.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I know. We don't know where the county is in adopting this. They may have adopted, they may not have adopted.
But the state law doesn't take effect until.
State law doesn't take effect, but the the underlying jurisdictions need to adopt rules as we are doing to comply. Don't know where the county is in that process. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, they did actually bring up one thing, which is, uh, is this retroactive at all as in, is it just permits starting in January twenty twenty five and forward that it would apply? Or is it going backward to?
No retro, no retro.
Okay.
So the ninety days for my friend would start on January first, twenty twenty five.
That's when state law goes into effect. They should double check like Mayor Pro Tem said about where they're at in the adoption process.
Talk to his favorite county person and say, are you complying with Senate Bill?
Five two nine zero.
Known as fifty two ninety.
Is it fifty two ninety? Oh, I thought it was five two nine zero. Okay, thank you.
Losing our clip.
You're slowing us down, Joe.
Alright. Any further discussion? Alright, with that as first reading, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Maintain the flow. Alright. Next on now, on the agenda. Next agenda is Agenda Bill twenty four one oh two, revising the corporate boundary of the city of Snoqualmie, including a portion of three eighty fourth Avenue Southeast right of way. First reading of the ordinance, twelve ninety seven, Councilman Cotton, would you please read the summary?
Uh, this agenda bill seeks approval to revise the corporate boundary of the city of Snoqualmie to include three hundred and eighty fourth Avenue Southeast right away from Southeast River Street to the southern edge of the Kimball Creek Drive intersection. The proposed action is a motion to adopt ordinance one twelve ninety seven, revising the corporate boundary of the city of Snoqualmie to include a portion of three hundred and eighty fourth Avenue Southeast right of way. This is the first reading.
Right, this is the first reading unless there's a motion to waive second. No motion is required. Uh, are there any members of the public wishing to make comment on this before we move into discussion? I see we have Steph present in case there are any questions. And discussion council? Councilor Wilson?
How many people have hooked up to the new sewer?
The new sewer is not active yet, so hopefully zero.
Um, the requirements, as I understand it, for annexation are, is a sixty percent vote of the people being annexed or at least that many hooked up to the sewer? Is that, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, attorney can correct me if wrong. If we were annexing residential areas, yes, it requires sixty percent vote of those being annexed in. As we are just annexing half a road.
Okay.
It's just the county who has to agree with what we're doing.
Exactly, yep.
So it, this doesn't involve annexing any of the houses along that.
It wouldn't change any of the statuses on those host, houses on three eighty fourth. It would simply just be changing the ownership of the road from county to the city.
So the residents that live along that road are still in unincorporated King County?
The west side of the road, yes. The east side of the road is city of Snoqualmie and already is.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, carry that one forward to the next agenda for motion and adoption.
Pat, does sixty percent of the road want to be in?
Alright, with that, we'll move on to committee reports. Public safety, is there any report for public safety?
Nothing further to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Community development?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Alright, uh, parks and public work. We have Agenda Bill one oh three. Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Plan. Councilman Rotten, will you read the summary and motion?
I think Cotton is what you mean.
Cotton, I'm sorry. I am sitting for it.
I'm flattered.
What in a redhead?
Could be.
Okay, let's see. Um, introduction, this agenda bill seeks approval to adopt the uh, updated Snoqualmie Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan twenty twenty five. Motion to approve Resolution sixteen ninety five, adopting the Snoqualmie Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails, the cross plan.
Second.
Did you have something to show tonight?
I can, if you'd like. Ready to go.
Please do.
Does that have to be the same pace? Do I have to, is there a time limit? Yes. Let me go ahead and share. I just wanted to do essentially share a, it's a kind of how to read this document guide is more or less what we're doing. The document itself is really all the the meat potatoes that you need for understanding the intent, but I have a slideshow and the consultant is on board tonight to kind of go through and explain her if you'd like, and I'm happy to give that presentation. Go ahead, okay. Hey, Marissa, can I introduce you real quick and also double check that you can speak on into the council meeting?
Hey, we're not getting any volume.
Can you hear me now?
She's really quiet. Gets talking.
Keep talking, Marissa.
Anything, just giving it a shot.
We're getting nothing, Jimmy.
I wonder if she's muted on her end.
No.
Yeah, we double checked earlier.
Any luck? Can you hear me?
Marissa, I can see you on the.
Yeah, I.
I cannot hear you. Yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Are you reading, let's?
Well.
Can we proceed on though?
Yes, we can proceed on. Um, if I can take ownership back of the full screen there, Jimmy, then I'm good to go, but. Um, okay, so this is, like I said, the kind of walkthrough of how to read the document. I could pivot over to it, but I have an entire slideshow to kind of go through it, so. Um, that's previous meeting. This is just kind of a quick understanding of what we have here in the city of Snoqualmie. We have a pretty robust uh, variety of parks ranging in different size and scale. So community parks being our largest parks and then they kind of shrink all the way down to, we have quite a few pocket parks. We have a lot of acres of parks, six hundred plus. We have thirty five miles plus of trails. Uh, comparatively, we have a lot of access and infrastructure related to parks and open spaces that are pretty wonderful. And that is what this document is about. It's the long range planning component of this system. So this is kind of part and parcel with the comprehensive plan that you have all been probably hearing about as the parts have gone through the different elements. This is essentially the parks and open space version of that. Um, as part of this review, there is a couple of goals or intent in involved in starting this process and so um, I'm gonna kind of go through a lot of it as we go, so I'm not gonna read to everything here just to keep going, but essentially what we're looking at, what does the community think about our parks, our trails, our infrastructure that we have related to that in our open space? Thinking strategically about what's kind of required around us, so thinking like the state, how, what policies do they have that kind of impact our systems? And then kind of looking at the opportunities that we have given kind of the natural elements that we have, so you can really think about the, you know, long, uh, long term, but valuable like trees in in forests, urban forestry, as well as our kind of larger open space fields and meadows, so. It's kind of a pretty deep dive look at what we have and what we want to do with it going forward. And so we, uh, and I'm gonna say, we, the consultant, Kimberly Horn, who's not able to speak for themselves right now, but conducted a pretty deep, deep dive on our uh, connections to the community and what they want. So as many of you were at those meetings, we had in-person workshops. We also had direct one-on-one interviews with councilmembers, the mayor, city administrator, lots of staff were involved in that as well. And then I think some of our favorite work, which I think is captured on this next slide, is the work that was done online. If you had the opportunity to go to the city's website, we had a really cool interactive map where citizens could log on, place pins, questions, cool ideas on a map directly. That's still actually open right now on our website. So we have that, the other sections on our website, those meetings, uh, reports and some other details I'll get to, but essentially we have all this public engagement and that kind of helped guide us onto our decision making, which is kind of what we wanted to recommend for the parks going forward, knowing where we have come from with our past plan. So this is the key themes, the key takeaways that we received from from those stakeholder feedback opportunities. Um, one of the biggest elements before we kind of started making decisions about what should change is a look at what we have right now. This is essentially a grading rubric for how to understand our inventory. So if you think of a grade, letter grade when you're in school from A to F, uh, an F in this case being the critical infrastructure, priority one, right? So highest priority for us is to fix things that are failing. The things that are brand new, fresh off the shelf, so to speak, do not need to be replaced right now, so they get a, an A in this case of five. So that's how we kind of reviewed it. There's more details on how that was, you know, denoted, but don't need to dive deep any further, but this is an example of what we get from that inventory. So somebody went through every single park and trail section that we have, gave us an inventory of all the amenities and features and types of equipment that we had at that location, gave it a letter grade or in this case a number grade. And then comments on what we could do to maintain it going forward. So we have that for every single playground, park and trail in our city. And that's captured in this document. That's actually maybe the bulk of the materials. It's got great pictures, so good for referencing for later. Uh, the next part of that is to look at what it's gonna cost the city to maintain and do visionary projects within that parks and open space concept. So we have as you're very aware, the six-year non-utility CIP, this is really non-utility sided. It has a lot of replacement, repair, maintenance of parks, playgrounds, parking lots, um, things like that. That's kind of what this is intending to get at, but looking at a broader time horizon than just one to six years, or rather all the way to more like twenty years and beyond to some extent. And so what you'll see here is a kind of capturing of those three different future CIPs, the one to six, the seven to twelve, thirteen plus. Uh, and then we also have it broken down by the types of, um, you know, what's being replaced, whether it's parks or trails, open space maintenance, things of that nature. Uh, this next one is a list of visionary projects. This is also captioned in there. They took this from our uh, six-year CIP as well as the big talking points that came from the stakeholder feedback. This is essentially big changes. So the community center in this case is captured in a visionary project. Um, if we were to do a new section of the river trail, that would be considered a visionary project as well. Uh, there's also a breakdown description there if you want to deeper dive in the plan. Um, this is a, I'm just gonna cruise real quick. This is essentially us thinking about all the ways in which we might choose to get funding to achieve all these goals. And so it was an effort to make sure that we're thinking about all the possibilities. The consequences of those links, so for example, grants have consequences, right? We have to usually do something, some performative exchange. Either they want us to do something for their own state law policy goals and objectives, that means it's restricted use, or it means that we have a partnership that's in the volunteer and that we have to kind of facilitate, facilitate an opportunity for them to volunteer, right? So there's kind of, here's our list of funding, here's the things we consider to achieve our kind of end goal. This is the kind of four categories of breakdown of what we choose to, or we, or what the community in its review of the system, you could categorize their recommendations in four different kind of blocks. And so that's how we chose to denote it. The deep dive into this is essentially that we have four kind of cap, captured ideas, the first one being equitable inclusive parks. You'll see in here things like uh, recreation access and new programs for elderly and disabled communities, things like that. That's all captured in this series of recommendations. This is gonna be all listed out in the plan. I can get you a page number in a minute if you, give me a sec, but I'll keep going. Uh, the enhancement to community connection. So this is again, we got a lot of trail connections, so you're gonna see trails interweave through all four of these links, but that was a big one as well as communications. How do we do volunteer programs? What opportunities does the city have for volunteering recreational opportunities? Got a lot of connection, or think of it as like, how does the city communicate with citizens about what's going on within our parks, trails and open space? Third one, celebrating our natural resources. This is probably a very clear one for you all as well. It's, we have really wonderful open spaces, trails, parks. How do we maintain them? How do we make them better? How do we make them look and feel a certain way, the best meets the needs of the citizens that are living around them or using those spaces? And then the last one uh, is maintaining all that infrastructure that we already have. So we had a lot of indications on replacing equipment, new benches. It would be nice if there was dog park things here, something like that. Um, so we got a lot of that kind of detail as well. And that was my very quick, as fast as I could, uh, run through of how to read the plan. The plan is hundreds of pages. It's broken down into pairs, so if you're trying to find your way through it. Uh, the last bit is that there is a appendix at the very end that is probably familiar to you if you have read the twenty eighteen uh, Parks and Open Space Plan, which is this document is the replacement of. Uh, that appendix is essentially the goals and policies section that you would probably see if you're reading different comprehensive plan sections. So it, it has something essential like, uh, I call it a, a New Year's resolution approach to uh, planning, which is you have a New Year's resolution, which is whatever, to get fit. But you have a bunch of ways you could achieve that. Go to the gym, get a membership. Start running.
Don't overeat.
Don't overeat, right? So that's essentially how I see a lot of those, that little policy section. It's what's the big goal? And then what are all the pieces of this that will make us successful if we do them? And sometimes they're really ambitious and sometimes they're lesser self, but that is essentially the document that I've adopted with the comprehensive plan later. This is kind of a standalone section. And they harken to each other, so I just want to call that out.
Thank you. Council, any further discussion? Uh, let me do back up one second though. Uh, just wanna offer, we haven't got any public, but I do want to offer a public comment in case any of the staff wants to make public comment in regards to this. Seeing no hands, we'll proceed on with the council. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, one thing I noticed that I just want to call out was, um, that I saw the projected number of households is going to decrease by twenty twenty nine by a hundred. Yeah. I thought that was weird because I thought that we had certain growth targets that we're still kind of negotiating, but I, I didn't uh, think that we were going to get an allocation to decrease our number of households. Um, that said, I'm not sure how germane that one little tiny thing was to adoption of this entire plan. But I was curious about that.
Marissa, do we have the sound fixed? Can you speak to that?
Um, are you able to hear me now?
Hey, we got you.
Oh, cool. Okay, great. So, um, those numbers were taken directly from ESRI, which is the GIS software that's able to um, produce demographic information. And so some of those things do not take into account local initiatives or Initiatives or growth initiatives in that way. So it's, it's really just a direct um correlation from the GIS report. And so there may be other reasons why, you know, there's a decrease in population, but. It, you know, it may, may not be as accurate if there's certain growth initiatives that are happening locally that are not really being influenced by those numbers.
Essentially, this is a forecast of which there could be many. Um, and if, I think what's maybe going on too is that there, we have county growth. Targets and things like that that can kind of play into this. This is just a way to look at a demographic analysis that's approximate. Um, and ESRI is one tool to measure the future household numbers and population numbers.
But if I may, in the comprehensive plan, don't we also have expected population projections? And I guess my underlying question is, shouldn't this be harmonized with the comp plan as far as what those targets, what those projections are?
I am happy to take a look at those, make sure that they're synced up. I hope that they're not too far off and I don't believe they should be, but I can clarify that.
They're at least a hundred off.
They're a hundred off?
They're at least a hundred off in twenty twenty-nine.
I can make them look, I think we can make them look the same, um and we can get checked to make sure that there's no consequences to that. If, if that's what you'd like me to do.
Given planet, given planning document and the action to harmonize the two documents, are you guys still okay with proceeding forward with this tonight?
Yes.
All right, Council Johnson.
Then the only other thing that I was wondering about was um, I, I looked in, I saw that the. Number of people who were, were feeling like there was a need for an indoor playground was fairly small. Um, I think that's, that'd be a significant expense to try to build a whole building for a playground. Um, was there any discussion of a covering for any of our playgrounds, kind of like what they have for a lot of our daycares in the area? Um, such that uh when it's not raining sideways, it's raining vertically, we could have some uh dry playgrounds in the area. There just any discussion about that?
We, we definitely, Marissa, do you, if you have an answer, just and start interrupting me, but I do know that in some of our recommendations. There is some infrastructure that's covered, for example, amphitheaters, we're in there as a, an example.
Yeah, shade came up quite a bit in some of the um comments. And so looking at different shade structures and like, like Dylan's getting at is. You know, having the pavilions and then also having shade over at the top of the playgrounds. Those things have all kind of come up in some of the comments on the website. Um, and I believe they were translated into the recommendations in various ways, but uh we could look at adding a recommendation specific to shading the playground areas. I don't believe we have one in there currently.
Do you mean like a full cover of a playground, like a fully, like if it's raining and your kids are still playing on? Or do you mean just like pavilions nearby?
Uh, well, what I was thinking was kind of like what they have that um, uh, the uh daycares that are on center. Uh, kind of on that corner, there are a couple there that have shade over them and also uh it got her. Uh, they have a nice shade over uh the um, the play structure. And I don't know how much it costs to put one in, uh but they have them up year-round. When, wind or no wind.
I, we, we can include things like that. Um, of course, if you want me to make it very explicit in this document, we can. But that is something that does come up when the design of the playground, because we'd wanna be pretty cognizant of wind impacts of certain playgrounds and. Tree canopy could be another thing for wrecking our gutters, but um, yeah, if that's something you want me to make sure to include. If, if you give me a motion or whatever is required, I can make that correction and we can. It could be done before it's adopted.
Uh, do you want, you guys, Council Benson?
Yeah, uh, along those same lines, I've also heard from a lot of people that we need um racket sports. That are uh racket sports locations that are covered, so that there could be year-round tennis, pickleball, that sort of thing outdoors. Um, and I, there's, there's value to that. Uh, I know that. Uh, I, I played basketball with guys in the rainy season where we'll go all the way to Fall City so that we can. Invade their, their uh elementary school and play basketball on that one covered court in the valley. That isn't in a gym. So covered, covered sports, uh would be a great thing to include in there. I know that there's a lot of need for it.
Councilman Cotton?
Just a question to um, a- and I know these are kind of like the thirty-three thousand foot overview type of a thing, but. I think in there, there was comments from the community on the, the survey about um. Uh, increasing lighting uh in some of the sports fields and such. And so I did have a concern about that in that. We are, you know, considered a dark skies initiative community. And I know in talking, I think it was council member Johnson and I spoke with. Uh, former mayor Larson um about um the visual effect. Like of lighting up some of the community parks and it was looked into and tried out and I guess like. Lighting up like Jeannie Hansen or something like that, you can see in North Bend. Um, so there can be some. Drawbacks to that um as far as with, with everyone wanting to, you know, have night sports and stuff like that. I get it, but we also have the, we have to balance that with the other part.
Ten people at home or?
They can see it from.
They can see the lights. Yeah, yeah. Because of our dark skies.
There, there was actually a, if I may, uh, there was a GIS study which actually assumed, I think, a fifty-foot. Light and then did a projection of where that light could be seen from in the valley and in the city. Uh, and that's what you're probably referring to at that time. It wa- it was a good distance out. Council Johnson?
All right, um, then if it's all right with uh, with staff and with the rest of the council, I, I'm not gonna be too particular about. How the wording is done or exactly where it's fit in at uh Mr. Gamble's um discretion, but um. If, if that's acceptable, uh move to uh explicitly call out. Uh, looking into covered spaces for outdoor recreation, pavilions, et cetera.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, little dinosaur, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The amendment passes unanimously. You'll take the action to incorporate that in to the process plan. All right, back to the main agenda of adoption of the overall pros plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, uh, effort uh for finance administration, we have no report, but I do have, we'll move right into committee of the whole. Uh, I did uh send to you tonight an email and apologize, not in time to react to you tonight. Uh, but what we had for uh legislative priorities for last year. And start using that as a starting point for discussion of next year. And at least the, the headlines again, um, the major items are the community center expansion. And I already know there's a typo in the first three words of that one. Uh, affordable housing. Uh, probably can expand that, but at least what we had before was uh expanded read authority. Uh, we've had other discussions of, are there other mechanisms under which we can. Afraid some of the costs for an affordable housing and could the city, could the state provide us some additional tools to do that? I'll go grab those words and bring that back in. Uh, public safety, again, uh officer recruitment and retention, juvenile access law and police pursuit. You were gonna check in public safety uh, uh in the week to come, uh where we are in regards to the police pursuit issue. Okay. Um, and then kind of two phase on here. Okay.
Um, on the uh police pursuit issue, especially uh for a public safety committee. Um, I don't think that it's useful, in fact, it could be um, it could sort of um make our position look weaker with uh. Saying some property crimes as vague as that is, um, because it could be, you know, that there's some tiny thing and oh, we're gonna chase some cars down. Uh, still calling me Parkway at a hundred and twenty miles an hour, um, which doesn't sound very safe or worth it. Um, so I think that I just either enumerating them or if that seems like it's a giant list, um. Either striking it or or whatever, but just that particular part about some property crimes, um, should either be enumerated or we should consider if that's worth happening.
Good for Christian.
Uh, I, I did meet with uh Chief Lynch to talk about um the three priorities that were on there for public safety. And at this point in time, as. Folks may be aware, back in June twenty twenty-four, so this year, they did go ahead and expand um the ability for police to go ahead and pursue folks in certain circumstances. And a certain degree of confidence that a crime has been committed. At this point in time, comfortable taking that off. For now, I don't think that we anticipate that there'd be further movement on that at this. Legislative session anyway.
Okay.
And Chief, if I've misstated anything, feel free to, but the other um two I think are important to leave if we're gonna go ahead and talk about them. Right now, or I don't know if you want to just put it on the list.
Uh, I was gonna go back to listen and come back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, and maybe do a little preamble to, uh, and the next one was the I ninety. Huh? Oh, Councilor Watson?
Yeah, uh, our pro team, I, I, I think this is a good exercise to go through this evening, get a little bit of feedback, but. But just um realize that probably the majority of the lifting should be back at the committee level and, and then we bring those things. And then we bring those things back forward because there's some other things that probably should be added onto this as well.
Right, this was not meant to be thought discussion, just the start of the discussion. Uh, and I don't intend to actually drive this to like a letter. Uh, what I'd like to orchestrate is sometime after the elections, we get the elected officials. And, and we probably have a, a working meeting with both county and state elected officials representing us about what our priorities are. So this is just starting of some talking papers for that engagement. So yes, uh, this is wrong. Help me make it right. And that discussion. Is meant to go on for some time now. Okay, so please do have the discussion in, in your committees. Okay, uh, proceeding where we were, one is the I ninety highway eighteen interchange. I kept that one on just to make sure we, that stays a priority till conclusion. Um, I brought back on the Squawney Parkway jurisdiction transfer. That's good. Um. That's kind of in limbo in my head, so I want us to have a discussion with our elected officials in regards to that, where that is going. Uh. And then we have the perennial, the property tax cap. And it doesn't keep up with inflation. It's limited to one percent regardless of what inflation is. Uh, and that was the list I have at this stage. I did put on here the reference of what our current council priorities are. Just to see how they reflect back and forth with what we're discussing with uh elected officials eventually. Council Benson, you ever head up?
Yeah, I, I did wanna make a quick comment on the property tax cap. Uh, tripling that, I think is pretty huge. Um, and I guess I'm trying to square up. The idea of us being very conscious of. Percentage differences in things like administrative fees for waste, but then pushing to triple the property tax cap. Uh. I'm not. They seem, they seem like. Uh, this seems extreme to me when we consider that we're, that we're concerning ourselves about. Uh, so, and I think rightly so, concerning ourselves about smaller figures in other parts of the budget. Uh, but then talking about potentially pushing to triple that. That would be, that would be a kick in the teeth for a lot of folks to have their property taxes tripled. Just the, and, and I know it's not a tripling of the total. But, but the, but the, but the increase, the increase, the a tripled increase in the city's take on that. Would be pretty big.
Just from just. Yeah, I wonder, um, it sounds like public safety is gonna tick up the public safety things. Have, have uh the rest been divvied out? I think they're pretty clear where they would go.
We can.
Like um, community center expansion and highway eighteen and Squawney Parkway, that sounds like parks and public works. Affordable housing sounds like community development and then property tax sounds like F and A.
It's a good plan.
Amen.
Second.
Okay, I, no objection. Uh, other than if your committee decides to wander off into other subjects, have that.
Yeah.
Eventually, this has gotta be ours. Contribute as you see, not as you are limited. Go ahead, Council Johnson.
And uh, one other thing uh was um that I appreciate having the reference to the council priorities. So that I can remember while I'm looking at these things to see where we're aligning. I don't think that necessarily our legislators wanna see that.
No.
Yeah, okay, just wanna make sure that wasn't intended to go to them, because then it junks things up for them.
Yeah. Okay, so as we discussed, please take that to your committees, have those discussions, we'll bring that back here to council next week and continue the discussion in regards to that. Yep. Uh, with that, we will move on to. Commissions and committee liaison reports. Are there any commissioner committee liaison reports for this week? Council, uh, Chris.
Uh, for King Conservation District, the ILA is moving forward with King County, their council to determine whether or not that will be approved. They're also going forward and hope it, hopefully going to be on the ballot in February to do a new form of elections for their positions. They're currently working on the language for that. Uh, for the pick and SCA, they are looking for twenty twenty-five. Boarding committee appointments. So if you're interested in serving on a regional committee, please go ahead and look at the positions that are open for that. In addition, on Wednesday, uh, this Wednesday from five thirty to eight, there's going to be a SCA networking event. It's insights for, excuse me, from. Political adversaries, um, which should be interesting as well.
Thank you.
Oh, on Wednesday. Yeah, are you going to?
Go ahead and cast a gun.
Um, for the uh King County, the uh EMS advisory task force. Have, all the committees have reported back, um, and uh. Uh, there was a consensus reached as far as what's going into the levy within um, while staying within or under. Or under uh, currently the levy is twenty-six point five cents, what per thousand? Um, and so staying underneath that, we're still gonna be able to um increase some of the revenues generated. For, especially for the BLS, which will affect fire departments um countywide. And uh, so increase that from a uh potentially three to five million dollars a year allocation to. Um, the, the King County group. So it is, the plan is, um, again, another six-year levy. We'll go on to the twenty twenty-five general election unless the King County Parks Levy is gonna be. In the general election, then we'll move it to the primary. So right now it's proceeding around the uh, to city councils. Cities over fifty thousand um to get that presented. Um, but I'm just. I know we're close to fifty thousand, but I just wanted to let you know that they're not coming to, to, to you, but I'll keep you updated.
Council Johnson?
Yes, the uh Planning Commission has been working long and hard over the last few months on the SRI retail development standards. Standards and uh the retail district overlay code amendments and um. Well, uh, perhaps uh Director Artetra could say exactly what the next step is. I believe that we are coming up to the point where it comes to council. Uh, probably to community development and then uh onto the full council uh for um. Uh, for our consideration and what that specifically addresses is the uh, uh, the retail usage uh on center. And uh in the downtown retail uh district. Um, so we can look forward to that and hopefully uh addressing some of those issues. And we've been talking about for the last few years.
Do you want, do you wanna give us a schedule?
Yeah, just kinda like what's coming with that.
Yeah, so this coming Monday, we're gonna have a open public hearing on um code amendments for historic downtown district retail overlay. Um, we, we also have a side and parallel effort to address the retail um issue on Center Boulevard. Um, that did go through a public hearing several weeks ago. Um, so once we complete the hearing on Monday, then we can forward on the draft amendments. Amendments to the CD committee for review and seek a recommendation and then on to council, probably. And then on to council, probably beginning of November. And it will accumulate in, in at least two years' worth of work. I know these issues have been going on for many years. And it was a very big lift to get to where we're at right now. But it'll open the door for many more wonderful code amendments too. So happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other reports? With that, we'll move on to the department reports, city administrator Chalice.
Really encourage you to look at these, with all that's going on up the highway. Obviously, the highway Facebook pays, pages of the one getting all the attention with social media. Community Development has images of the new downtown banners in there and they looked marvelous. Finance does a pretty deep dive into the status of Tyler. That's worth noting. And basically I'll spoil the lead and, and let you know that we're, we are on track to go live for the first of the year with payroll and we will be out of Supreme Brook for payroll. We did a whole bunch of training today that went very well for the majority of the city. So we're ready to go. Thank you for the HR payroll team that worked a miracle to get us there. And then the last thing I'll highlight is Parks and Public Works, they are live and Tyler. So far this year, they've already done 900 work orders, I believe Jeff was saying. And some of the first Tyler data is, was used to compile what you're seeing in here for that. So Jeff will be bringing some Tyler reports into Parks and Public Works on kind of a quarterly basis to kind of let you know what's going on, but exciting stuff there. Thank you.
All right. With that, that's our regular agenda. Well.
More, got one more here.
Councilman Cotton, you got your hand up?
Oh yeah, I just had a question and maybe Chief Lynch could answer this on the police report under the crisis intervention contacts. Is there? Let's see, I was going to say, is there a reason that there was such a change? I, and I guess in a good way, but the September stats from 2023 to 2024, there in Snow Colony, which has always been, I thought, lower than North Bend. There was in 2023 of September, 54 crisis intervention contacts. This year there's three in September, but and yet the 2023 year to date was less than this year. So was there something going on back? Okay.
There was.
My memory. I probably forgot what it was, but.
Yeah, so we had a prolific caller and each time those calls came in, they are put in as a, under the CIT nature. So the crisis intervention team, I'm, I'm heading. So those are the numbers that you're seeing from last year.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay. Thank you for refreshing my memory.
Yeah, no problem.
Should have been recorded as one is an ongoing crisis, but anyway. Any other questions in regards to your report? Councilman Benson?
Dude, are we not going to get a mayor pro time report?
No.
Wow, wow. I was impressed up till now.
I will try to do better. Next. All right. With that, that's regular agenda. We'll now move into two executive sessions. One executive, executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101G to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment to review performance of public employee lasting 10 minutes. Those attending will be the interim city attorney, David Lyman, city administrator, Mike and Mike Chambliss. We will then have an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101AI to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding discussion is likely result in adverse legal financial consequence to the agency. Meeting is expected to last about five minutes. Those attending will be interim city attorney David Lyman, city minister Mike Chambliss. I asked finance director Drew Potato remain and chief lunch to remain. Uh, no action is anticipated following the conclusion of the executive session. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. City clerk will be informed of the concluding time of the executive session and that will be reflected in the meeting minutes that go out.
I didn't understand any of that. Can you read it again?
Nope.
Call it a mayor time report.
There will be a recording if you care to go back and listen to it. Let's do, before we get back into execution, let's take a five minute break and then get back here at 8:02.